Come on. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 18th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first off, tell you that if you wish to address this on a case and you are not the applicant, these sign up sheets are available on the table right outside the chambers. If you complete that and give it to our secretary, we'd be happy to hear you. Although judging from the number we have, you've probably already figured that out. Secondly, I'd like to ask if you have cell phones or pagers or any other electronic device, if you would silence or turn those off now, we would appreciate that. And you're welcome to fill the first three rows here in the chamber. We're really not that difficult to deal with, so you don't need to all sit in the back. First order of business today is to approve the September 23rd, 2010 minutes. Is everyone here, or?
I think we might have enough folks.
Well, we just need five, but we need James, and he's apparently walked out of the room, so we'll have to put that off. And, well, we need James. Oh, there he is. We need you, James. We want to take up, James, the September 23rd minutes, and there were just five of us present that day. Janice has made a motion to approve. Gave a motion and a second, any discussion? Five members who were there can signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those minutes are approved, finally. And now to the October 28th minutes. Any changes, discussion, or motion?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the October 28th minutes. Cast your votes.
We have three uncontested requests for continuance, items 17 through 19. Is a C-6247, which is item 17, a request to continue until December the 9th? Item 18 is C-6249, to defer indefinitely. Item 19, PC 10268, has been withdrawn.
Did anyone happen down here today to talk to us about any of those items just read, 17, 18, or 19 are on our agenda? If not, a motion?
Motion to continue, Mrs. Redd.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and the continuances are approved.
We have three new requests for continuance. Item 10, which is PC 10264, request to continue until December the 9th. Item 11, which is SP 423, request to continue until December the 9th. And then item 13, which is SPUD 592, request to continue to December the 9th.
Same question on items 10, 11, and 13 on our agenda. See if we had anyone signed up.
Number 13.
We have a number of you signed up on item 13, I believe. A continuance is being requested, which means we will not hear that today if we approve the continuance.
What's the date for the reset, Johnson?
December the 9th.
December 9th.
Which means if we don't hear it today, it'll be on the agenda at our December meeting.
Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here?
Apparently not.
Perhaps staff could help a little bit, and it seems like if there are people here who want to be heard on the subject, perhaps it would be helpful to do a meeting between the applicant and those present.
Right. We just received this email just a few minutes ago requesting a continuance.
On the other hand, we are not obligated to approve the continuance either, commissioners. We have folks here today who want to talk to us about it. I'm inclined to at least hear them since they've taken time out of work and coming down to see us.
I'm absolutely inclined to hear it because we've done this too many times, when people really take an interest to sacrifice time and effort to get here for a meeting, and then at the 12th hour, the applicant doesn't show up and said, "I want a continuance," and you guys who are here to protest or in support of it, whichever side, it's not fair. I mean, and my question is, is though, too, don't we have some sort of a unwritten policy about, you know, granting continuances just without regard to any reason whatsoever? I'm prepared to hear what the protesters say. I've read the application, and I'm prepared to act on it. Can't we act on it?
We certainly can.
We can.
Perhaps we might ask them, though, which they would prefer, to be heard today or to take an opportunity
That's good.
To meet with the applicant in the interim and come back. I mean, I'm willing to do either. I certainly, you know, respectful of the fact that they've taken the trouble to be here.
Would one of you like to visit with us about this? You need to come to the microphone, sir, if you would. And if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chris Flannery, and my address is 10624 South Choctaw Road.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I live right across from the proposed business site. I am here speaking on behalf of numerous residents in living immediate vicinity of the proposed business site. This business will have a negative impact on our living, including
Mr. Flannery, let me just stop you for a minute. Our question is, do you want this item to go forward and be heard today, or do you want to
No. Do I not have
Or, I mean, there are two choices. We either hear it today, or we hear it on December 9th, and we're just asking you that question.
Yes, I'd like today.
And that's the consensus of the folks that are with you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what we need to know right now.
That, that's it?
We'll hear you in order
Now.
We'll hear the item in order on the agenda, is what we're talking about doing.
So then, are we going to move the continuances absent
Yeah.
Excluding item 13?
Yeah, this motion will be
Ignite the continuance for item 13?
This will be the continue items 10 and 11.
Right. So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue items 10 and 11. Cast your votes. And that is approved.
Now, with respect to item 13, what are we doing?
I think we need to I think we need to have a vote to hear it today, do we not, since we've had a request to continue it?
No.
No? Oh, we can just, okay, we just ignore the request. All right. We'll go on to
No, wait a minute.
So we're not going to hear
We're going to hear it.
Going to hear it.
We're leaving it on the docket as it appears.
Absent the applicant.
Right.
I agree. Who requested a continuance?
The applicant did with an email just a few minutes ago.
And he's not here.
He's not here.
Okay.
Are there any other continuance requests from the public today? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent docket?
We have one item on the consent docket today, which is item 1, to initiate an application to the Oklahoma City Board of Adjustment for a temporary variance to permit gravel parking in the C4 General Business District at 1322 Northeast 23rd Street.
Nick?
Just one real quick question. Why are we initiating this as opposed to the applicant? Why is the city initiating?
That's for JJ, I guess?
The temporary nature of the variance that we're working now with the mosque, trying to relocate them to a new location, the city and urban are working together, and it just seemed to be the best way for all parties concerned to just initiate it and let us run it through the process.
Well, I understand the request for variance, and I certainly don't have a problem with the variance, or the period of the variance. I thought it was a little unusual that the city was initiating. I was wondering why. Thank you.
James, you had a question or comment?
Comment. I've visited with them, owned it, and been working with the mosque and the city on that, and for a short period of time, two years, I believe it is.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other discussion, commissioners? Motion?
Move the variance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 1. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 2, this is items requiring separate vote, is Annexed 201001, an annexation of the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 14, North Range 4, west of Indian Meridian, northeast of the intersection of Northwest 192nd Street and Portland Avenue and Ward 8.
I know where this is, but I'm interested in why we want more land when one of our concerns is development at our city's perimeter now.
It's a valid concern. I'm Ken Bryan. I'm a planner with the City Planning Department, and I've been working on this annexation. As a matter of background, there's a general obligation bond project along Northwest 192nd Street. As it stands now, our city municipal boundary is along the center line of 192nd Street, so in order to widen the roadway and spend GeoBond dollars on that project, we would have to pull the entire right-of-way into the city limits. So that's the purpose of this action.
Is there a cost connected with that, Ken?
With the annexation itself or the GeoBond project?
The right-of-way.
Uh, no.
Taking in the right-of-way?
No, and I'll talk about that just a little bit. There's, that goes to the nature of your first question. The additional, the initial area we looked at just included the right-of-way, approximately 50 feet from the center line of Northwest 192nd Street. As we were working with that property owner to gain consent for the annexation, they agreed to consent to the annexation if we would take their entire property, which includes most of the quarter section in question. I got a, you can see here on the, the map shows, the red line was the area that we talked about before, and the entire quarter section is shown there, patched in purple. So we do have consent from the property owner for the annexation as it, as it appears there for the whole southwest quarter section. And so that's, that's the thinking behind expanding the area to include the 160 acres as opposed to the 50-foot strip on the north side of 192nd Street.
What would happen if we didn't approve this today as it's presented to us?
Actually, that's a good question for one reason. There are two ways to annex, get consent from 50% of the area of property owners, or do a service plan for the area that you're going to annex. In this example, the work that we'd be doing on the roadway would satisfy that service I don't know how, I don't know what would happen regarding the annexation/deannexation committee. They have, they looked at this this week and didn't have any issue with it and recommended that, that council approve, approve this annexation as it is, the full quarter section. So
If we, well, just, I'm really wrestling with taking in more real estate, although I can see that we're just extending one quarter section to the west city limit that reaches that far north now. But if we just had to acquire the right-of-way, we would do that by eminent domain and pay for it, or what would happen?
I'm not exactly sure how the right-of-way would be required under that scenario. I assume we would have to buy it.
If we needed right-of-way, would we have that capacity to require through eminent domain, if considered essential?
But in this, the way it's structured right now, the landowner has agreed to contribute that right-of-way? Is that the situation, or?
That's my understanding, Nick, and of course, I think his motivation is, okay, we're now in Oklahoma City, we're going to be R1, we can connect to sewer water and develop this as
Well, I understand all that.
Yes, the driver.
But initially, obviously, the city started out with enough for the right-of-way.
Right.
And as the annexation committee has some way changed their mind, and I'm looking for another incentive, and I thought that incentive may be the fact that with the owner on board, if you will, by annexing the entire quarter section, that he would not have to go through the connotation process and pay for the right-of-way. But that was a question. I don't know that to be, be the facts, and, but that's the way, reading between the lines, it appears. So that was my question.
Yep.
Do we know, are we paying for the right-of-way or not?
I actually don't know that. I, it's my understanding that they're granting us the easement in accordance with the, you know, as kind of our negotiation to take the entire quarter section, that was part of the deal, that we will be given that easement along 192nd.
Somebody standing right behind you who may answer the question, I'm not sure. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Rachel Mezier. I'm with Public Works. Do you still want my address?
Okay. I don't, no, we can probably find you if we need to.
Okay. I'd like to address the question of the cost. We have negotiated with the owner for them to donate the right-of-way as a part of the annexation of the entire 160 acres, and you were correct, we would have to go to eminent domain if we were to try to get the right-of-way without annexing the rest of his property. So we would have to pay for it.
Is there any, any range of typical costs for things like that, or do we have any idea?
In that area, it's between $3 and $8 a square foot, and from a previous report, the area of right-of-way required was about three acres.
So it would be pretty expensive?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps. We at least have a better understanding of the process, at least I do. Thank you.
And it does, it would come in as double A. So, you know, if they wanted to do something R1, they'd have to come to a rezoning request. Okay, are there any other questions about the area or the map?
That answers mine, Ken.
Okay.
Anyone else? Action? Discussion?
Move approval of the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 2. Cast your votes. And my red light's not working. In any cases, approve, 5 to 3.
Item 3 is SPUD 590, an application by Haylen Buckley Survey Company to rezone 1500 Southwest 149th Street from AA to SPUD 590 in Ward 5.
My name's Charles Allen. I'm with Haylen Buckley Surveying. We've read through the staff report, agree with all the technical evaluations, happy to answer any questions. This is a little five-acre track that the own, that is owned by Jimmy Hillis, and he lives directly to the east on the adjacent five-acre track. He is looking to probably sell that track, develop this with, with his two sons into three lots, and the whole family would live on the five-acre track. Happy to answer any questions?
No one has signed up, commissioners? Yes.
Move approval of the application?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 3. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 4 is PC 10267, an application by Commercial Permits Express to rezone 1633 Northwest 2nd Street from R2 Medium Low Density Residential to I1 Light Industrial in Ward 6.
Dean Dyers with Commercial Permits Express to represent the applicant, and we agree with the one item that, I guess it's listed as a TE in reference to the site triangle on the corner, and everything else is okay?
Again, no one has signed up.
My only comment on this is, we had an application last meeting in the same general area, and there was a fellow that went to school in the same, you know, and I didn't require it, but I asked about the potential of this area being the Oklahoma City West End, the commercial interests along Main Street, along there, and, and without any controls whatsoever, and this is the guy, you know, last meeting, they were committed to landscape, to make the building nice, et cetera, you know, without this coming in as a, as a SPUD, with its controls, it's just left to the imagination of the owner to do something better than what's there. And I don't know, what's your client that says to facilitate industrial development? Is this a, going to be a new building?
There currently is one building there already, and I think there's going to be another, but he also owns the business. His business is directly across the street from this property, and, but he doesn't have a problem
Is that the printing?
Yes, sir.
Is that what he does?
Uh-huh.
So it would be to his benefit
Oh, yes.
To make this a better place.
I don't think he would have any problem with it whatsoever.
I mean, I can't make any requirement. There's just this straight rezoning.
Right.
But I think this, and I'm not strong enough to have a bully pulpit either, but, but nevertheless, I would hope that
I understand.
That there'd be landscaping and appearance, et cetera, because there's no reason to have this continue to, you know, to deteriorate as it has been over the past many years.
As I understand it, and I don't know if this answers your question or not, but if there were a new building to be built and they went to get a building permit, the new landscaping would be automatically required.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, good, that's it. I approve, move approval.
Okay.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item 5 is PUD 1424, an application by Kelly Goddard to rezone 3500 Northeast 10th Street from R1 to PUD 1424 in Ward 7.
DW, haven't seen you in a while.
How you doing, commissioners? I'm DW, representing the applicant, and I'm here with Garrett to also answer your questions. We agree with the TEs. We have one revision. We agree with all of them. We have to, if you would add one use, we'd like to be allowed to sell alcoholic beverages or beer.
I'm sorry, you wanted to add what use?
We'd like to be able to sell beer.
How much better do I wakeboard if I've had a six-pack? Yeah, boy.
Probably more for the entertainment aspect of it. As you know, this is going to be a park, we're looking to be a park deal. I'll let, I'll let you answer your questions.
If you have been drinking, we will not allow you to ride.
I was going to say, do you get the beer before or after you fly?
No, when you, when you come in, we check in at the park, we give you a wristband, and then if we were to sell beer and you have a beer, we actually cut your wristband and the operator down there would know that you have been drinking, and he won't let you ride without a wristband.
Well, but DW said he'd go buy the beer. I knew the way
Finn. And you got children there, too, don't you? It's a family park, too, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be a family park, and it will not just be a beer-drinking party. I mean, it's just, if a parent wants to come, grab a beer, watch their kids.
Two things. I don't have to, I can support the beer being associated with the park at the point. And then I want to, can I go ahead and ask a question?
You're right. Fire away.
I want to know about the meeting with the, with the public. Did you have a meeting with the residents and the property owners around?
Okay.
Did you have a meeting on the 16th? I believe it stated on, let her hear that you had a meeting on the 16th.
Yes, sir. We went and met with them and filled them in on what we were doing, and, you know, some were supportive, some were just more curious about what jobs we were to have to offer, and, you know, unfortunately, we cannot predict the amount of jobs that we are going to provide. You know, we know kind of the certain amount of what we can do, but it's, you know, we don't want to promise the world and then have people mad.
It was stated in the, this document I have before me that a number of things needed to be worked out, or they had some things that was going to be further explained to them, or some items came up, they was going to make some adjustments. Could you tell us a little bit about the meeting, what took place at the meeting, what was I'm not understanding the question. I understand that this public meeting on the 16th, that some of the residents had some questions that, that you were to give back some answers to them, or some items that you changed, and I'm not certain what it was, but Most, okay, if I understand the questions, they, they were asking questions about economic development, about jobs, and I'll be the heavy here. I told them not to address that because this is a zoning deal. We're here for zoning. We're not here to talk about our finances or our business plan. So I'm, I'm the one that told them, don't get back. That's, that's not the issue. We'll do one step at a time. We'll do the zoning, and then as we work forward, we'll know what we're going to do. But I can assure you that from talking to my clients, that they are going to be equal opportunity employers, they're going to follow the rules of the land, and we will comply with anything we have to do as far as employment. It behooves them to hire the people in the area to be employed, behooves them to use the local contractors in the area. I mean, I know servants, so do you, and I've already made recommendations who to hire. So I basically said, don't get back on the economic development stuff because you are going to be making promises you may not be able to keep up. So I'll be the heavy there.
So there wasn't any discussion about the impact on the neighborhood with noise?
Yeah.
Or with, I mean, the rezoning and this activity with the neighborhood, were there objections about what?
There were some concerns about noise, and what a cable park is, is it's just a five-tower system that surrounds the lake with, with an electrically driven motor. So as far as noise goes
No gasoline-powered?
No, it is just
No speedboats?
Oh, no.
We have a PowerPoint, and we'd offer to show that to you if we can get it running. Can we get it running? Much my answer. We've got a handout for you, commissioners, the chairman.
Yeah.
If you'd like to look at that, we could do that, and we could do the PowerPoint presentation and let you guys kind of see what this is all about. I was down in Orlando, first part of this week. This, this park down there is incredible, and I think it really will be enjoyable if we get it down.
This is what the site in Oklahoma City would look like, if you want to go to the next slide. The first few slides just, oh, I'm sorry. The first few slides just had different names of different cities and states around the nation that actually had wakeboard cable parks, and Oklahoma City would be one of a dozen in North America, and this is a craze that has literally swept the world. And I would like to get Oklahoma City on this elite list. And then, you know, we are here to get approval of Oklahoma City zoning change, and it will allow for the installation of the wakeboard cable park. And you might just be asking what a cable park is and what is wakeboarding, and we have a video. I don't know if it will play, though. We've been having trouble playing the video. Were you able to get it to play? Okay. Well, it, it describes what wakeboarding is and what a cable park is, and at the end it says, you know, the manufacturer's turning their attention to the United States, and we are returning our attention to Oklahoma City. Some benefits for the wakeboard cable park is it will have guests all over the nation and many different countries to our location. As a water sports venue, our operation would complement the plans mapped, maps venues along the Oklahoma River as long as with the Adventure District, and the retail sales would enhance the tax base of Oklahoma City. The proposed site is a total of 67.29 acres, and the land has been used in the past as an open pit for sand dredging. It is at the northeast, or it's located at Northeast 10th Street near the Oklahoma River and actually consists of two lakes. We have a picture of what we are doing. We propose to have our building in the center, and then have the cable lake to the south of that building. And then this is a drawing of, from the manufacturer saying that this lake is a perfect fit for the wakeboard cable park. It actually goes in a big oval towing up to seven to 10 riders at one time. It actually replaces the need for a boat. And in our development, we have the wakeboard cable park. Phase one would be to install the cable park in the building and actually get functioning. And then phase two would be to team up with a nonprofit organization and actually host one to three fishing clinics per year for the community youth. And then phase three would be to actually dig that north lake into a lake for boats where we could do clinics and lessons and such. And approval of this proposal would allow the location of the wake park to be installed in Oklahoma City. The property has been vacant for years, since the 1960s, and we would transform it into a world-class sports venue and a destination for a lot of out-of-town visitors. It would allow for regional, national, and world-class competitions to site, bringing competitors and families to stay, dine, and shop in the Oklahoma City metro area. And while tournaments are not being hosted, this would be a premier practice facility for the competitors, universities, and participants just wanting to enjoy the sport of wakeboarding. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. We've got a couple people signed up that we'd like to hear from.
I'd like to tell the commissioners, this site currently is in Guthrie. This facility is moving from here, from Guthrie to here.
Okay, the, the Garden Oaks Church Neighbor Association signed up, but no individual names, so who are
name, so who are we going to hear from? If you give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Willett Lindsey, I'll be speaking in behalf of the Garden Oaks Church of Christ and the Neighbor Association, they may also have representatives signed up also. In, in my protest here, we're just simply asking for more time. On the sixteenth, we did meet with the developer, and there were some concerns, they were addressed. Regrettably, it, Florida does only one day to assess what you're living at today, and this is kind of our first time seeing it, so we're kind of seeing it at the same time. Of the concerns that were raised, I did attend the meeting on the sixteenth. We did understand that there was going to be a response, and they did give us some verbal. So we are not just really yet able to say that, that this is a proper time to just move this hearing forward, since the commi- the community and the residents haven't had enough time to meet with the developer, have a response back, and that being that we only granted one business day. So that was our petition to this, this August body, is to simply table it to the next regular meeting to allow residents to be able to voice and then provide public comment. And I think that is the purpose of a hearing process, a public hearing process. That's really all my requests is before this commission today, to ask that you grant the citizens more time to be able to understand what's in it, perhaps what, how we can strengthen the proposal.
All right, thank you. If you would also give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Hattie Marsh, my address is thirty-three twenty-eight North P C eleventh Street.
Thank you.
I didn't know anything about this notice of rezoning until yesterday. My cousin called me and asked me if I was going to the meeting, and I asked her what meeting? And she says that they want to rezone, um, part of Garden Oaks tradition behind, uh, over on Tenth Street by a coal train. And I can't see them rezoning that part in there, because we have two churches that's on, um, Redbud, and then all the, from Redbud on is residential area. Now, if they go and rezone that area, they would come all the way nearly up to my front This is not a place, a residential area, it's not a place that a public business should use. They're talking about all the people that would come in and, uh, buy tickets, and they sell their products and have all this fun, but they're worrying about the people that might not be coming to have fun and might be coming to do harm in their neighborhood. I wouldn't trust it to be safe without all these people coming in and out all the time. We have problems now getting from Stanish up onto Tenth Street because of the traffic. With more traffic, it would be a congested area. I would like for my granddaughter to be able to come over to my house and rip and run and play without me worrying about some cars that's coming from that park over in that residential area, because I can walk down to where they're planning it. That's how close it is to my home. And we already have both service yards over there, a construction site, and we have this oil paint refiner. They're tearing up Tenth Street, got a fill-in on Tenth and Stanish where they're going to put something there, then go down on Tenth Street between, uh, Bright and I thirty-five, they're clearing that land to put something there, too. After a while, we won't have anything that we can take pride in. I take pride in my property. I have flowers in my yard, they put that savage yard to, from Tenth to Park, they was on landscaping. All they did was went out, dug up in the country, dug up some cedar and planted along that fence line in the back. I don't call that landscaping. And if they build that water park over there, it's gonna be noise, congestion of traffic, and people are not gonna feel safe in their homes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, discussion. James, any thoughts?
I have one question for the applicant, if, uh, I'm looking at the plan, and it's fairly small. Uh, I understand that the initial operation's gonna be in what I'll call the South Lake or the South Park. Is access all going to be taken off of Tenth Street?
That's correct.
So all access comes off of Tenth, and the, and the parking's gonna be on, over on
that side?
Yes, sir. Yes. One access off of Tenth Street, there will be no traffic coming to our business going through the neighborhood unless they get lost.
Thank you.
If you can, okay, if you notice there's a buffer between us and the neighborhood.
No, I, I realize that. I was just thinking, wondering if there was gonna be any access off of Redbud or not, and that answered my question.
But the, but on the map, the larger one, you said it's off of Tenth Street, can they not come from the west to the east?
He's in here.
No, can they, can they come this way?
No.
You'd be coming off Tenth Street going north into the park, you won't be going anywhere else but from Tenth Street.
You can't, you can't go west out of the park on Tenth.
Yeah, go west. If I may, if I may provide a response. But you can't, my concern was that there'd be some kind of cross-access from the west off of Redbud.
Oh, no, 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 not that.
And I wanted to make sure that wasn't the case.
So, so Tenth Street is.
Tenth Street's a.
It's a big, wide street, yeah.
That's state highway.
They're not talking about a residential street on this at all? That's all, that's, that was my question. There'd be no reason for anyone to go into the residential neighborhood who was coming to or from this site?
If you look at the southeast corner of the site, you'll see the drive right there, that's what we use, it's a concrete drive, but then when they widen Tenth Street.
I'd like to know, in your public meeting that you had with the community, did you, was it explained what you were doing and what were some of the comments? I'm not talking about some of the other comments about work, I'm talking about the land use, I'm talking about the operations. What was the comments on that?
Uh, you know, once they actually got the concept?
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's really no, you know, no fight, or no, you know, no, oh, I'm sorry. No one was really against it, because, you know, we, we explained it's quiet, we're not going to bother anyone. We left on, on the west side, it's heavily wooded, so there's a big buffer there, and you know, I don't even think they'll be, they'll know that we're there.
What are the hours of operation that you anticipate?
Usually we run from about noon to eight, and then that, those are the hours, seven days a week.
So I assume you're not gonna light this for night?
No.
Activities, so you?
We would just have security lights, you know, just to have our building secure.
Right.
But, yeah, there won't be light at night riding.
Would you agree to include the hours of operation in your P U D, maybe as an additional T E here, so that the neighbors would be comfortable that this is not gonna be a twenty-four-seven kind of operation with baseball field lighting?
I concede, yes.
And this subject site area that's outlined here is the only area that we're talking about in this P U D?
Yes, sir.
So how far are we away from Redbud? What's the closest distance to Redbud, would you say, that this site is?
Um, what do you think?
Probably three hundred fifty feet.
Yeah.
How much, D W?
Probably three fifty. If I had, if I had the aerial photo up there, I could, I could tell exactly, there's a mention on there, but.
The reason I was saying that, because really, I'm familiar with the area, and it's quite a bit of a buffer area between the lake and any of the residents. I can understand about some of the concerns. If all of the property was going all the, you know, I think this property really runs all the way up to sixteen, but this is the only area that's being considered.
Yeah.
It's just within other, the other part of the property is not being touched, and it's, and it's heavily wooded all around, and it's been there, they run a horse-riding stable operation in that lake now, and it's been running for years. So I don't see any, any, uh, problem with it, I just had a problem with alcohol, I would not like to have any beer on it, on the site, because of family activity and the related activities next door and what that might, might do. And other than that, I can move forward with it.
And, and parking, D W, would be internal to the boundaries that we're seeing identified here as well? So we're not gonna scrape trees and build parking over to the residential.
No, it's, it's, we're wanting to keep a park-like environment.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, and we're trying to keep it.
And there's no access?
Yeah, less than development's better, this deal.
Yeah, no access on to any of the residential streets, so I don't have any problem with it, if we can live without the beer, I'll make a motion that we approve the application.
I think we'll, I think we'll concede.
Okay.
We don't need the beer.
Okay.
James, with, with the hours of operation noted and without the serving of alcohol?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, we have.
They're talking about, uh, sixteen Street, it's a church right there on Sixteenth and Redbud, and there's one a little further down on, uh, Redbud.
Yes, I, I looked at that, and when you look at.
We don't want that farm park in our backyard. They can say what they plan to do, but when people come in, they say, no liquor gonna be sold on that. You, I see signs where it's no liquor allowed and people drinking liquor all the time. What's gonna keep them from drinking liquor over there and then coming over in the residential area?
The management of the site.
I see lots of problems with that park coming over in that residential area. If you start rezoning things to, uh, for these millionaires and billionaires to move into our community, we won't have no, no place to go. We get up here and want our opinion that we don't want them there, and then you'll say, it's okay, you can go there. That's not right.
Our job is to evaluate the land use requests and balance it with the needs of the community, and that's what we're here to do.
We, we don't need a farm park over on northeast Sixteenth to Tenth Street. We do not need that over there. We have problems as it is. That's gonna add to the problems. So I wish y'all would consider, how would you like for me to come over there and put that in your neighborhood? Would you like it? We're surrounded by service yards, gravel pits, and all this.
This would be an improvement over anything you're describing.
Uh, no, it would not, because it would be destructive to the residents that lives there. I can get out, I can get somebody to help me mow the, over there and plant some flowers and trees and stuff to beautify it.
It's been there.
But we don't need the noise that's coming from over there into that residential area.
Okay, thank you.
That riding stable he just mentioned?
Mr. Chairman.
Very seldom anybody is ever over at that riding stable or anything.
I'd like to call a question, please.
I pay closer attention to what's going on in the neighborhood.
Ma'am, we've had someone call the question, so we now must vote. We, discussion is closed. We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Hold on a second.
And have we added a T E to limit the hours of operation?
We added the T E.
Okay. In that case.
And the beer.
And no, and no alcohol.
But in the applicant.
Which, which is?
That wouldn't.
Okay, cast your votes. This is to approve item five as conditioned. It is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your work.
Item six is S P U D five eighty-five, an application by Ron Walters to rezone nineteen-thirty-five northeast seventh Street from R two and C four, S P U D five eighty-five in Ward seven.
I'm, uh, Ron Walters, eighty-five oh one, South Walker, Oklahoma City. Gunner Crest is a pretty simple, uh, it's a location at Seventh and Martin Luther King Boulevard, there's an acre and a quarter there, we would like to rezone it to develop it into a, a commercial site. We don't have a current tenant for the site. Our current intentions, our proposal is to build a series of multiple buildings, there are three is what's on our, in our draft. We wanted a pretty wide wing, wide, whatever, wide range of zoning to accommodate whatever we needed. Staff recommended we zone it as a neighborhood business district. Within neighborhood business district, I would like to remove, we assume there probably wouldn't be a, allowed being across the street from Douglas High School, liquor store, anything like that, we don't have any intentions of that. Our intentions for the property are to do just what the zoning says, a neighborhood business district. We're looking, we're speaking with several nonprofits, some cleaners, sandwich shops, beauty shops, this type area, we've got a couple of doctors looking at outbuildings there. This is our intention for the use, use of the land. And we, that's pretty much our request.
Would you be willing to take out eating establishments, sit-down, limited alcohol and sit-down alcohol permitted?
Uh, we could, I, I.
I'm not inclined to like that right across the street from a school.
Yeah, uh, we're trying to develop a high quality of product here. If that's a make or break issue for the zoning, I don't, don't really have a, a situation with it. Same, one of the other things we'd looked at that was questionable was veterinary. We don't really have a problem in the back part of the site or whatever, putting a veterinary place, but we're not gonna allow outdoor kennels or anything like this. One of the key things to the site, it has a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree exposure, our intention is to use some type of a four-sided architecture all the way around, we don't want anybody on those streets driving down looking at the back of a block building, you know, so, it's one of the key things.
My comments only from one commissioner, I don't know how any of the others feel, but we'll hear from them. Well, I've got a, I mean, the comment, the first, I read this, was the number of uses that you had, where it is, across the street from Douglas High School, across the street from residential areas that are being developed. And then you said, you're just gonna do commercial, and then your application says, office, commercial, residential. You didn't mention residential, but on your use, your use units, multiple-family residential further limited to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. In other words, I don't know what you're doing, and, and by saying.
I can answer that.
And then also, animal grooming, grooming, uh, kennels, veterinary services, like Mr. Yocel said, eating establishments, alcohol permitted, uh, I don't know what laundry services, laundry services could be a full-tilt laundry thing rather than pickup-delivery. The trouble with this kind of application, when you want to do as many things as you possibly can squeeze in it, the residents, they're around where you are, and the school could be adversely affected by any one, by leasing this to any one of these very intensive, in my opinion, inappropriate tenants. So I can't approve it with the, with, with what you have here, and we've also said many times, I'm not here to negotiate with you. I, you know, I don't want to waste time saying, take this one out, this one out, and this one out. So that's my first comment. Second is, is that on the site plan that you submitted, and I don't understand why we're not going to be able to see the final site plan under our policy, but the T E says that you can't get off into this place off of Martin Luther King. That's what it says.
That's correct, just because it's too close.
Then the site plan that you have isn't gonna work. And further, but, but then this is my real point, is that, that off of Martin Luther King, all you're gonna see, if this was your plan, is a parking lot and the building's back behind. Well, if you're gonna get off on whatever that street is and then enter your, your business, wouldn't it be best to have a building along Martin Luther King and the parking and the internal part? You're gonna have to do something different, because you can't, you can't use Martin Luther King as, as the, that's closed off. So wouldn't it be best to have some nice structure surrounding Martin Luther King? One of the more successful commercial developments, at least so far, is Class and Curve. If you've been there, all the parking is internal, everything comes inside, and it really is nice. And I think that the, just, you should consider, when you do your revised site plan, that you now can't get off into or out of the place on Martin Luther King, to consider putting the building over there and then have all that stuff internal. Everything is great.
It's an interesting proposal.
Okay, well, that was, that's my comment. James?
Yes, uh, I'm very, I'm very sensitive to the area, because we're watching this developing, and I'm very appreciative to everything that's going on, but I think that we have to maintain a sense of continuity in the area, and we have to be very particular how we put it together. a sense of continuity in the area, and we have to be very particular how we put it together. This is a revitalization, redevelopment area, and you made a great stride there, and I appreciate that. But when I look at the uses, I'm kinda like Mr. Bright and Mr. Yocel, Commissioner Yocel, is that we do need to pin it down to what we're trying to accomplish, and I particularly didn't think the animal sales and grooming and alcohol and, you know, some of those things. I know that you're in the process of probably, don't know exactly, but I think you have an idea of what you want to do, and I'd just like it, keep it to what it is, what you want to do with the property, or what you're trying to do, because once the zoning goes, it goes along with the property. And once we have these things in place, if someone else comes along, then, and all that's null and void as far as what you were trying to accomplish. So, it's not what you're doing, but it's what goes along with the property.
James, I might suggest that you and Mr. Walters and staff meet between now and our December meeting and kinda have that conversation.
Okay.
I agree with you. Mr. Walters has been a very positive and constructive influence in that area, and we don't want you not to succeed in this project, but we also have some concerns about exactly how it's done, particularly given its site.
I understand. The two situations I might address is, I didn't think anybody would be issued, the alcohol wasn't a big deal to me. We didn't want the alcohol, but I didn't think they'd get issued a license to serve being across the street from the school, period. So, I thought that being in or without the zoning was mute. The reason we listed the residential element in there is Urban Renewal has a desire, we're purchasing the property from them, but they like the mixed-use type of product, and we had talked about on the site possibly having, like, commercial on the bottom and having some apartments built up on a second floor.
Well, as Commissioner Bright said, we really don't want to be negotiating this from the horseshoe, and we would like to ask you to take a couple of weeks and meet with Commissioner Williams and the staff and come back to us maybe on December 9th with a revision to this application.
That'd be fine. Then can I ask for that extension?
You absolutely may.
In that regard, Mr. Chairman, that was one of my concerns. I agree with his neighborhood business district concept. I think it's a great concept. I was confused, as been pointed out, that we have office, commercial, and residential here. You also have a very small site. It's 50,000, 60,000 square feet. This is an S.P.U.D. I would like to see you come back with more specifics, you know, and I'm not against the residential upstairs, as you just said, necessarily, but would like to know what the plan is.
Freddie Anderson here. We might ask that you participate in that discussion, if you could?
Yes.
Since you're obviously interested. If you want to say something to us, please come up and we will hear you. Give us your name and address for the record as well, please.
My name is Freddie Anderson, 2400 Northwest 114th. What I've done is given my mother power of attorney as a recreational vehicle to steer the navigation of this property. If you could go back to one of the previous slides, Mr. Walters, he doesn't own all of that property. The top portion, that's dotted, dotted off, that's in my name.
You're talking about the northeast corner of the property?
That is correct.
Okay.
I think I know where to go on with that, Mr. Chairman. I've kinda had some dialogue with Ms. Walters. I think what's going on with that is, I don't think what's happening that you think is happening, you know, like you said, in your deed, it's listed your lots, it's in their deed, and their lots listed in your deed. Well, in this, in that deed and that subdivision title...
Legal description.
Legal description. What they did was, I forgot, what's the name of the subdivision?
It's Overhosted Jordan.
Yeah, it's Overhosted, it's Overhosted Jordan, but what they did with this legal, with the title is, they put the lots associated with the subdivision name. So, the lots that is being questioned for the subject property also list your lots, and your property also lists their lots, because for some reason, they put the overhosted addition lots 26 through 14...
19 through 32.
19 through 36. So, both deeds will have that same information as a title of the subdivision and not as ownership of the property. And I think that's what's confusing, so it's not affecting your property.
Yeah, but then what I was going by is what Ron Land Growth had spent, where they had cut off the back of the building. And then, when I met with Mr. Walters, and that's, he's talking about blocking that street off, and that's gonna close me down, I'm trying to redevelop, we're all trying to redevelop that area there, and then it won't have access, the distributors won't have access to the building.
Well, this application is not about closing the street, this is just...
But that's what, yeah, but that's what's included.
I suspect that's just the way our illustration is shown, and these are not to scale.
Okay.
I don't think, that doesn't really appear to be the case when I look at the whole application.
And I looked, we looked into it, so it's not, this application is about zoning the property that's not yours.
As long as it don't take none of the property that don't belong to you.
And it's not.
They won't do that.
This is gonna be table for later day.
Yes.
December 9th.
December 9th.
Okay.
And we will not be talking about closing the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, or actually, a request from the applicant to continue this item for, until December 9th, so...
Make a motion that we continue it.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to continue this item. Cast your votes, and we'll hear it on December 9th.
Item seven is C. 6243, a revised final plat of Heritage Oaks Edition, Section 3 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with S&amp;C Engineering, representing the developer. Have read the staff report, and we agree with all of the TEs except number three. We would like to make a change to it and give a little background what's going on with that. When the preliminary plat was originally approved, there on 122nd Street, there was a signal at Pennsylvania, that intersection, and a signal light at Western Avenue. Since that time, there have been two other signals placed on 122nd Street, basically on our west boundary and our east boundary of our property. One goes into Heritage Hall School, and the other one goes into the Canterbury Retirement Center. So, I had our traffic engineer, Steve Hoffner with TEC, who did the original traffic report, take a look at it and see if that changed any of the dynamics of it. Him and Tom McHale of our firm met with Stuart Chai, and their back and forth, they've agreed that we would go ahead in this phase, and we'd like to construct the left turn bay, left turn aisle, and not put in the traffic signal at this time.
Let me ask you a question that's somewhat unrelated, in fact, very unrelated, and that is, what is the garage setback requirement in this PUD?
I believe our building setback is at 15 feet.
Okay, is there a different requirement with respect to parking space? Did you modify that in your PUD?
I'll be honest with you, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Because it would be 18 feet unless you've modified it, otherwise in the PUD. I'm not in favor, as we've heard many times, with the 15-foot setback per se, even if we've approved it in the PUD, because I've got direct experience with it. My daughter and son-in-law live in a neighborhood of 4,000-square-foot lots with 15-foot setbacks, and they've got a 16-month-old baby. You cannot put a stroller on the sidewalk and walk in the neighborhood. You can't use it. I might consider making a trade with you. I might let you defer the traffic light to the next phase if you'll agree to make sure the garage setbacks are 20 feet.
I can't do that at this meeting, to be honest with you, because I don't know the exact configuration of the units that they're putting on each lot. So, I don't, this is a very tight site. I don't know that that actually works, if they can put their product in there, if we agree to that. I'd have to talk with the developer about that and get that okay.
Chris, this is a revised final plat.
Yes, sir.
What's different?
The original preliminary plat layout, we had some smaller detention areas shown. On the first final plat that we turned in, we thought we had a deal worked out with the adjacent property. And if you see on the map, there's a large existing pond to the east of our property, and we were working out an agreement to use that existing pond, make some modifications to it, and use that as our detention for our site. That agreement fell through, didn't get worked out, so we came back, revised the layout, so we have all the detention on our site. And that's what caused the change.
Would you like to talk to the developer and see us on December 9th?
If that's a deal killer, I guess we need to do that, because I can't make that...
Well, again, I'm only one vote, but...
Well, he's more than one vote, because I have some problems also that I would like to have addressed, and you addressed one of them. But I also, and I haven't counted, Chris, I haven't gone back and compared, because I no longer have the data, but it looks like you've made this even tighter than it was. And, now, this is the...
I'm gonna actually disagree and say that we've reduced lots, because we had to give up lots for detention areas.
Well, you reduced lots, because you have more common area for your graining.
Yes.
But the lots you have left in, it looks like, it looks like they're a little tighter.
I think they're the same size.
Okay.
The 4,000-square-foot minimum was what was in the PUD, and that's what we have.
Well, I wish you would revisit the garage deal with them and bring this back. These are significant enough changes in my mind to warrant readdressing the garage front issue.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is my comment, and Commissioner Gales brought it up. I mean, I read this and I circled revised final plat. How could this be a final plat when the changes are so significant? Why aren't we back to just bring a preliminary plat in, because the first one failed, and so procedurally? Isn't this where we are?
Well, not necessarily.
Well, but can you, on a final plat, don't you have to be pretty darn consistent with what your preliminary plat was?
Well, if the change is the single item that Chris raised, not necessarily. I mean, he thought he had an agreement, and that fell through, but, I mean, he had, the 15-foot setback was what was in the preliminary plat. We did that in 2006. We've been much more sensitive to that setback since that date. You know, wanting to defer the traffic light again is significant in my mind, because it was originally set at a, at a trigger point of about 250 lots, thereabouts, and now we're talking about 304, I think, so that's a material change.
And I don't claim to be a traffic engineer, that's why we hired Steve Hoffner to look at it, and Stuart Chai, talk with him about it. If you want to hear from Stuart, I don't know if he's around. I talked to him this morning about it, and he said he was okay with what we were requesting.
Well...
I would be more comfortable if you would take the time to address the design issues that have been raised with the developer and bring it back to us, tell us up or down on...
So, is the request for a 20-foot setback versus the 15, or is it 18?
It's 20.
20, okay.
That's just the garage front. I don't care about the front of the building.
Just the garage front.
I just want to do everything we can to keep sidewalks clear for the purpose for which they are designed and built.
Okay.
And we're doing a better job of that as a city now than we have in the past, and I want to maintain that.
I will take that back to him. I just would like to point out that, as you said, this plat has come through before with staff report, and I've continued this one, I think, twice already while we were dealing with the traffic light issue, and none of the staff reports ever mentioned anything about that, so you kinda caught me by surprising on that.
Well, that's because you haven't been to me.
Okay.
Or us, I don't mean just me, but to us. So, if you take this to December 9th, I'll take a motion.
Okay.
I motion that we continue this to December the 9th, this application.
We have a motion, a second, to continue item seven to December 9th. Cast your votes, and thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item eight is C. 5538, an extension of the preliminary plat of Silverhawk in Ward
Lindsey Suttle with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. The purpose of our application is to request that the preliminary plat be extended as far as it expired recently, which we found out during the design of the next and final phase of the development that we're working on now.
This is routine, Commissioners, and it's the first request.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, motion, a second, to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item nine is S.P.U.D. 580, an application by Michael Pate to rezone 4810 Northwest 39th Street from R1, I1, and I2 districts to the S.P.U.D. 580 in Ward 1.
Hello, I'm Michael Pate with the Electric Guard Dog, also representing Express Auto Credit. I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. The way this one sprung up is I'm usually in front of the BOA in my applications for my security system, and there happened to be a zoning issue with this one, and the city staff asked us to address it.
And we're here, Commissioners, on the zoning request, the land use issue, the fences the Board of Adjustments issued, not ours.
It's just to increase the height, the variance to increase the height.
Well, actually, rezoning the land to permit use.
Right, excuse me, right. I'm with approval, I mean, unless somebody wants...
I'll second it. I do have one question that I just have to ask about your fence.
Yes, sir.
That has nothing to do, really, with the land use. I've seen prisons that don't have this good a fence.
Well, not true. If you actually have a, if you actually have a fence in a prison, it's usually a lethal device.
Oh, I'm not saying the amount of voltage and whatnot, but this is quite a fence, and I guess it begs the question, my gosh, what kind of cars are we gonna have in here?
Well, this is fairly typical. I mean, I've got about 2,600 installations around the country. This particular customer is suffering somewhere between $4,000 and $6,000 a month in losses in his storage yard, just because he can't keep people out of there. And basically, what I do is I guard storage yards for UPS, FedEx, major trucking companies, auto recyclers, auto resellers, et cetera, et cetera, John Deere, Caterpillar, anyone's got high-value targets that sit out in an open yard.
Okay, we have a motion, and you want to say something?
I've got a, this is a 10-foot-high chain-link fence.
No, sir. There's actually, it's actually a two-fence system, so the chain-link or the perimeter fence actually comports with the code of the city. Mine sits behind it, and I've got 20 strands of wire, four inches apart, that go to about four feet off the ground, and after that, I'm eight inches apart, all the way up to 10. It's virtually invisible, you really can't see it, except for the signage that I'm required to put on it by standard.
So, the perimeter chain-link fence isn't part of what this application is, right?
This is, we're just rezoning the land, Bob. We have nothing to do with the fence.
The fence is Board of Adjustments.
I don't like chain-link fences.
Well, chain-link fences are allowed in historical neighborhoods. We, we have a motion, a second, to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items 10 and 11 have been continued till December the 9th. Item 12 is C. 5685, it's an extension of the final plat of Jet G Farms in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll Sparks, representing the applicant, and simply an extension of a final plat, so ask for your approval and answer any questions you have.
This is just like the earlier case. Move approval of the...
Well, I need a second. Is that a...
Say.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thanks, Kendall.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 592, an application by Bob Gage, GTB Realty, to rezone 10440 South Choctaw Road from AA Agricultural to S.P.U.D. 592 in Ward 4.
Well, we don't have an applicant, but the...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Steph if there was some reason given why the applicant was not appearing today? If he was, I noticed that the number is long distance, whether he missed a flight, couldn't get here, whether there's some actual reason why he's not here today, if we know? J.J., yeah, this person that called just before the meeting, did he give you some reason?
He, he could not be here. He was going to send his surveyor, and that's all the information we got.
Okay.
And I don't know if...
The email says something about discussing masonry.
He wanted time to negotiate the masonry requirements before the next planning commission meeting.
We knew he didn't agree with the building materials.
I mean, that's what I'm reading.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm reading from it. My question, Janice, was yours, which is, why was this something the staff, I mean, I think it was, maybe, why did the staff approve this?
No, no. I was just wondering, since J.J. said he just called just before the meeting, or they heard from him fairly recently, and I just wondered if there was some particular reason why he was not here, you know, couldn't catch a flight, couldn't whatever, that would, you know? It always strikes me as odd when people have these things on the agenda and then they don't show up, knowing, and maybe they don't, I don't know, that... don't show up, knowing, and maybe they don't, I don't know, that this is not just a mom and pop, this is somebody who's in business, apparently, so, that there would possibly be other people who would, relying on the notice, show up here today. And, you know, I think it's important for us to hear them, as we've already discussed, but at the same time, I just wondered if there was some explanation as to why he wasn't here, that's all.
Well, the question I had was, you know, why was this something that the staff recommended since the southeast sector plan certainly doesn't call for it, and there's a groundswell of neighbors who object and say this isn't the use that they feel they need in their Well, we have a cast of thousands signed up to address this, and we will hear from all of you. I have one request, which is, kind of keep to the point, and we would ask that you not repeat what we've already heard. I mean, if you, if all of you have the same concern, we'd like to hear from a spokesperson. If you have a range of concerns, we'd like to hear all of those. So I'm going to just take these in the order that they sit on the desk here, and Melinda Lloyd is first. And if each of you would give us your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that.
Melinda Lloyd, 15124 Southeast 104th.
Thank you.
I have gone through the southeast sector plan, and there are several points in it that says they cannot do that. They cannot rezone agriculture to commercial in that area. Those three blocks on the far side, that is my house. I do not want to have to look out at that every day. We've already been robbed once, and it took several hours before the officers got there. This is going to be another potential hazard for us. We're going to be sitting ducks for unscrupulous people to stalk us and figure out our ins and outs, so that they can come and rob us when we're not at home. And then number two, the added traffic is going to be a burden on current residents. The comprehensive plan also discourages commercial development along section line roads. And, let's see, future development may compromise environmentally valued areas such as Hog Creek and heavily wooded areas surrounding stream banks. And then they're wanting to put an entrance also off of 104th and one off of Choctaw Road. We don't, we don't want that there. That's just more traffic for us, and it's going to cause more bags of trash and everything else for my livestock to eat and potentially die from it, you know, I mean. And then it shows that they're asking for a 20-foot lighted sign, but in the southeast sector, it says, Section 4, Number 5 states that all freestanding signs within this SPUD shall be monument signs with the max size of being eight-foot high. Well, how can they have a 20-foot-high sign there? But, let's see.
Well, the sign issue is a comment that we or the staff make. When you see that as a technical evaluation, that's our response to their suggestion that they want a 20-foot sign, but-
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
Then Oklahoma City does not have the resources to provide extra officers to patrol the area, which will be a robbery waiting to happen. Like I said, we were robbed once, so what's going to happen whenever they're robbed? How long will it take? And my other concern is if that store is robbed, it's all agriculture out there, so whoever robs it can just go through, bouncing pasture to pasture, and potentially harm us, or steal our vehicles, or whatever they have to do to get away. We moved out there for a reason, and that was to be country. And now with that there, we all feel threatened by it, and we don't like it and we don't want it.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
What is directly to the west on the other corner? In other words, it looks at zone commercial, what's there?
That, it's a residence, it's a house, and years ago, he used to work on school buses for swatch schools, and they had, made him go and zone at that to be able to work on their buses.
And what's there, does he store buses there, what's it?
No, nothing now.
Just the home, it's just used as a residential property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Flannery, we'd like to hear from you again. Okay. Give us your name and address again for the record if you-
My name is Chris Flannery, I live at 10624 South Choctaw Road. I live, if you could take that down just a little bit, that's my place right there. It's changed a little bit, I've got a new place. I have a double-wide trailer that sits on the other side toward what we're talking about. Right next to me, these other spots with the pond and the house up there, that's my dad. He just added on, beautiful home, and we just feel like this would, at night, there'd be a lighted area. The fact that it's going to be a Dollar General, the people that would come in. Okay. I am here speaking on behalf of numerous residents living in the immediate vicinity of the proposed business site. This business will have a negative impact on the way of living, including decreased property values, higher crime rate, and a less safe environment for children and all residents. We moved our families to rural communities to get away from the city and all the problems. All the businesses will do is bring the city problems to our rural community, and will pave the way for more business like it. We enjoy the quiet, peaceful homes, and just the noise alone would decrease our quality of life. These are just a few reasons we are against this business moving into our community. My brother lives just, what direction would it be? West of this spot, and he's got two boys. We're just afraid that it's going to bring in a bad element. It's beautiful out there. It's, you know, you can see the stars at night, and it's just very, very nice property. The Maddens live directly across, and they don't want it. I went and got a bunch of signatures of the residents that live around there. None of us want a Dollar General. I mean, if it was something else, maybe, but we're just afraid of the element that it's going to bring and what it's going to do to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have both Steve and Bill Flannery signed up. Do either one of you want to add something to what Chris has said?
No.
Okay, thank you. Shirley Madden?
My name is Shirley Madden, I live at 14900 Southeast 104th. At one time, my place is where it's zoned C4, the people came to us and asked if we would sell our corner, they wanted a corner, and we said no. A Dollar General is not something that we want out there. We've, I've got two miles to the west of me, I've got a convenience store, three miles to the south of me, there is a convenience store. If I come in from the city and forget to get something whenever I'm coming in from work, then I can run to one of those two places to get my milk, eggs, bread, and I can also get gas. But a Dollar General, no. I still have to go to the city to buy my groceries, and if I want to visit a Dollar General, I'll visit one there. But I do not want one right across the street from me. That full, that stoplight, not stoplight, but the stop signs there, that's the main road to the lake in the summertime, and we get all kinds of trash, people running signs, people that are drunk, and that's enough in the summertime. We don't need that year-round. So it's just, we don't want it. It's not something that we need out there at this time.
Thank you. Matthew, is it, please? I wasn't sure if I had a E or a C in front of me.
I faxed, my name is Matthew Fleece, I live at 11220 South Choctaw Road, and I actually faxed an objection by correspondence some earlier today, but I can leave a copy of, a hard copy of that as well.
Share it with us because we have not seen it.
Okay. And I think, just to add to what the others have said so far, there are definitely some issues with traffic, light pollution, potential crime that would be added by this being a new development, but I think more importantly is we want to ask the city, we want to ask the planning department to abide and have some integrity with the previous sector that was designed for this area. If you read through that sector plan, one area in the sector plan, it states, "The bulk of the southeast sector is rural, and these areas are to remain no to very low density to preserve the sector's natural character." The natural character of that surrounding area is rural. It's a very rural area. I know the city has been very concerned about mid-block developments. I actually went through one of those myself. It wasn't mid-block, I had one lot between a corner development and where I wanted to develop, so the city made me very aware of their cognizance of mid-block developments. This isn't even a mid-block development. It's over two miles away from the closest commercial node. That sector plan also describes how new developments should, as previously stated, should not be along section line roads, they should be, whenever feasible, close to commercial nodes, and this would make sense if it were two miles to the north in that commercial hub area where you had the Love Store, you had the Anderson Travel Plaza, you have the Sonic. Would this probably make sense there? Yeah, it probably would, but it is not in compliance with the sector plan. Now, the sector plan goes on to state that, you know, things could have a negative aesthetic impact, especially on this area. The plan states that Hog Creek area, which Hog Creek runs, it actually is to the north of where this is proposed, it comes across Choctaw Road, actually runs right behind my property, it runs on Mr. McNade's property, I believe. It's a really neat area. It's beautiful. My kids, Mr. McNade lets my kids go down to the Hog Creek area, and so it's pointed out in the sector plan as being a valued area. I think this would compromise that. It definitely would change the nature of the surrounding areas. Other things, Chapter 2 of the southeast sector plan states about the negative aesthetic impact, also talks about things being in compliance with landscape, and also serving the current context of the area. And so we feel like this is not in any way, shape, or form following the guidelines of the sector plan.
Thank you very much. I hope I pronounced this right, Lynn Cruckey? Crickie?
Here.
People mispronounce my name all the time, so I'm used to it.
Well, it's Crickie, but thank you for listening, and I don't want to be repetitious, so if I am, you can tell me to take a seat, but my husband and I moved here about six years ago, he's with the Air Force Base, he's an engineer. We lived previously at 105th and Yale in Tulsa, a very aesthetically pleasing area. We came here back in 19, or, yeah, 2004, looked around Edmund, looked around all sorts of areas for a beautiful area to build our dream home. We found 104th and Choctaw Road area, lots of trees, it resembled a lot of our Tulsa, you know, where we had been from, and so we built our home, and we didn't build, we built a very nice home, and there's several other, quite a few other nice homes being built out there. And I'm sure several of you have really nice homes too, and I know that if you're two, you know, less than a quarter mile away, Dollar General started going up, I think your property values would not stay the same or increase, they might just go down. So that's, you know, other than, you know, aesthetics, I really don't see, I don't see a reason for a store such as this. I mean, we have all of the really nice new stores that just went up, you know, across from Tinker, lots and lots of traffic in and out of there, and that's kind of where we do our shopping. We don't need to, you know, the place where we live is rural, it's just wooded, you know, streams, it's beautiful, and to have, you know, one little store plopped right there, it's just kind of like a splinter, in my personal opinion, so, but thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Nick? I assume you were clicking that on.
I have been an incorrect assumption, but okay. I am somewhat adverse taking action on an application if not present, and ask for a However, in looking at this application and actually not trusting the staff report, driving out there and looking at this site, and being cognizant of the southeast sector plan, I can't see how the applicant can make a case that this is in any way in conformity with the plan. This is a open section line corner at this point, has residents on southwest. It is certainly not a, going to be a large commercial development that's going to be a commercial magnet and anchor, can't make that argument. As was pointed out, this is not a commercial node. Even though the applicant is not present, I'm going to move denial of this application.
I'll second that motion. And with that, a comment about, it says under the staff report, relevant policies, although the proposed commercial development is not located in one of the areas, why are we even sitting here looking at this if we've done all the work with the plans, southwest, southeast, northwest, northeast sector plans, all the years that went involved in that effort? And we're sitting here with an application that has all manner of other problems, there are their eight Ts, that this should have been absolutely told the guys, said, "This isn't going to work. You're out of the picture. You want to come in, you know, we're going to do this, but let them move," you know, recommend denial. Well, my second is a strong denial.
Well, I share the thoughts of both of you. This is not appropriate at this location, does not conform to the plan, and does not conform to the desires of the people who live in that area and who participated in the development and sector plan. Janice?
I wonder if it would be out of order to ask Ms. Madden if she is interested in downzoning her property at this point, and to offer to initiate an application to do that for her, if she is. Don't mean in any way to influence the vote of this, but if her property was zoned for a specific purpose, it's no longer necessary, I think it might be a good thing to remove the precedent of it stuck out there. C4 is very intense commercial zoning. I agree with all of you that this is not in compliance with the sector plan. I hate to see that C4 corner sitting there. It's almost a dare to somebody to come along and try to, you know-
If you could come to the microphone, that would-
Try to capitalize on it, you know?
Well, I've been there for 30 years, and I don't intend to move the house, it'll fall down on my ears. It's paid for. We were told that it was irreversible, but I would love for it to go back.
It is not irreversible. You may at any time apply to zone it AA or RA.
Could we do that for her? I hate to put her to that expense, to downzone it.
I am, just, I got to interrupt. This isn't what we do, okay? I don't think this is our point to undertake from this commission to rezone individual properties, to begin the process of zoning. I just don't think that's appropriate for us.
I agree with you, Mike, that it is the landowner's election to do it. I applaud Janice, says making the landowner aware that that option is available to her.
As a suggestion, I don't have any problem.
That's what I'm saying.
And certainly you might take the comments of the commission here as probably being favorable to such an application, should you make one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a very strong second, as I recall, on the floor. You're ready to cast your votes, and the item is denied. You're ready to cast your votes, and the item is denied.
Item 14 is C-6248, which is a final plat of Bryant Place, Section 1.
Lindsay Suttle with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and agree with all of the TEs.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Any discussion?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 15 is an ordinance to be introduced with various amendments to the Zoning and Planning Code, Chapter 59, regarding demolition and other amendments to the design districts.
And we're also setting this for a public hearing, are we not, in January, on January
27?
27.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to introduce and set this for January 27th. Item 15, cast your votes, and that is approved.
Item 16 is a public hearing and resolution approving the 2011-2015 capital improvement plan.
I gather there was discussion at the study session about this item and continuing it.
I want to continue that.
Do it, are you saying do another study session?
Yes.
And then-
Yeah, then we'll move.
So is the notion to have the study session in December, at the December night, before the December 9th meeting, is that, I was not at the study session today, so I don't know what you discussed. Well, now's the time to talk about the timeframe. Pick one.
Well, I think- I think having another study session on the night, but as far as approving the CIP plan, I don't want to have that on the night. That's not enough time. That should be in the January meeting.
Well, the first meeting in January, I think it's January 13th, is that the right date?
Well, then just do the whole thing in the January meeting. These are holiday times in here.
Well, I understand, but if you want to do a study session, I think you do it in December.
Fine with me, I don't care. Sure. Sure.
Michael Stroop with Save Oklahoma City Budget Office. We'll be filing to move it out as long as the Planning Commission needs for review.
Okay. Well, in that case, let's have a motion to do a study session on, or we don't need a motion to do that, we just need a motion to continue the item to January 13th.
I move that we continue this item to January 13th.
Second, we have a motion and a second to continue item 16th to January 13th. Cast your votes, and that is done, and Russell, you'll schedule a study session. 17, 18, and 19 are already continued. Planning Commission committees, any discussion? Planning Commission members, any discussion? Planning Department?
So is the preference for the study session time, is that January or-
December.
December the 9th. December the 9th, all right.
Okay. Anything else from planning?
I don't believe so, no.
Development Services, J.J.? Municipal Counselor, Susan? I mean, we stayed on the straight and narrow today, and we did all right. Citizens to be heard. Other business, anyone? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Parking assignments?